Good evening, honoured guests, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the annual meeting of the council. I will now ask the mayor's chaplain to lead prayers. Thank you Sally.[164.80][164.80](pause)[165.30][165.30](audio cut off)[165.80][165.80](audio cut off)[166.30][166.30](audio cut off)[166.80][166.80](audio cut off)[167.30][167.30](audio cut off)[167.80][167.80](audio cut off)[168.30][168.30](audio cut off)[168.80][168.80](audio cut off)[169.30][169.30](audio cut off)[169.80][169.80](audio cut off)[170.30][170.30](audio cut off)[170.80][170.80](audio cut off)[171.30][171.30](audio cut off)[171.80][171.80](audio cut off)[172.30][172.30](audio cut off)[172.80][172.80](audio cut off)[173.30][173.30](audio cut off)[173.80][173.80](audio cut off)[174.30][174.30](audio cut off)[174.80][174.80](audio cut off)[175.30][175.30](audio cut off)[175.80][175.80](audio cut off)[176.30][176.30](audio cut off)[176.80][176.80](audio cut off)[177.30][177.30](audio cut off)[177.80][177.80](audio cut off)[178.30][178.30](audio cut off)[178.80][178.80](audio cut off)[179.30][179.30](audio cut off)[179.80][179.80](audio cut off)[180.30][180.30](audio cut off)[180.80][180.80](audio cut off)[181.30][181.30](audio cut off)[181.80][181.80](audio cut off)[182.30][182.30](audio cut off)[182.80][182.80](audio cut off)[183.30][183.30](audio cut off)[183.80][183.80](audio cut off)[184.30][184.30](audio cut off)[184.80][184.80](audio cut off)[185.30][185.30](audio cut off)[185.80][185.80](audio cut off)[186.30][186.30](audio cut off)[186.80][186.80](audio cut off)[187.30][187.30](audio cut off)[187.80][187.80](audio cut off)[188.30][188.30](audio cut off)[188.80][188.80](audio cut off)[189.30][189.30](audio cut off)[189.80][189.80](audio cut off)[190.30][190.30](audio cut off)[190.80][190.80](audio cut off)[191.30][191.30](audio cut off)[191.80][191.80](audio cut off)[192.30][192.30](audio cut off)[192.80][192.80](audio cut off)[193.30][193.30](audio cut off)[193.80][193.80](audio cut off)[194.30][194.30](audio cut off)[194.80][194.80](audio cut off)[195.30][195.30](audio cut off)[195.80][195.80](audio cut off)[196.30][196.30](audio cut off)[196.80][196.80](audio cut off)[197.30][197.30](audio cut off)[197.80][197.80](audio cut off)[198.30][198.30](audio cut off)[198.80][198.80](audio cut off)[199.30][199.30](audio cut off)[199.80][199.80](audio cut off)[200.30][200.30](audio cut off)[200.80][200.80](audio cut off)[201.30][201.30](audio cut off)[201.80][201.80](audio cut off)[202.30][202.30](audio cut off)[202.80][202.80](audio cut off)[203.30][203.30](audio cut off)[203.80][203.80](audio cut off)[204.30][204.30](audio cut off)[204.80][204.80](audio cut off)[205.30][205.30](audio cut off)[205.80][205.80](audio cut off)[206.30][206.30](audio cut off)[206.80][206.80](audio cut off)[207.30][207.30](audio cut off)[207.80][207.80](audio cut off)[208.30][208.30](audio cut off)[208.80][208.80](audio cut off)[209.30][209.30](audio cut off)[209.80][209.80](audio cut off)[210.30][210.30](audio cut off)[210.80][210.80](audio cut off)[211.30][211.30](audio cut off)[211.80][211.80](audio cut off)[212.30][212.30](audio cut off)[212.80][212.80](audio cut off)[213.30][213.30](audio cut off)[213.80][213.80](audio cut off)[214.30][214.30](audio cut off)[214.80][214.80](audio cut off)[215.30][215.30](audio cut off)[215.80][215.80](audio cut off)[216.30][216.30](audio cut off)[216.80][216.80](audio cut off)[217.30][217.30](audio cut off)[217.80][217.80](audio cut off)[218.30][218.30](audio cut off)[218.80][218.80](audio cut off)[219.30][219.30](audio cut off)[219.80][219.80](audio cut off)[220.30][220.30](audio cut off)[220.80][220.80](audio cut off)[221.30][221.30](audio cut off)[221.80][221.80](audio cut off)[222.30][222.30](audio cut off)[222.80][222.80](audio cut off)[223.30][223.30](audio cut off)[223.80][223.80](audio cut off)[224.30][224.30](audio cut off)[224.80][224.80](audio cut off)[225.30][225.30](audio cut off)[225.80][225.80](audio cut off)[226.30][226.30](audio cut off)[226.80][226.80](audio cut off)[227.30][227.30](audio cut off)[227.80][227.80](audio cut off)[228.30][228.30](audio cut off)[228.80][228.80](audio cut off)[229.30][229.30](audio cut off)[229.80][229.80](audio cut off)[230.30][230.30](audio cut off)[230.80][230.80](audio cut off)[231.30][231.30](audio cut off)[231.80][231.80](audio cut off)[232.30][232.30](audio cut off)[232.80][232.80](audio cut off)[233.30][233.30](audio cut off)[233.80][233.80](audio cut off)[234.30][234.30](audio cut off)[234.80][234.80](audio cut off)[235.30][235.30](audio cut off)[235.80][235.80](audio cut off)[236.30][236.30](audio cut off)[236.80][236.80](audio cut off)[237.30][237.30](audio cut off)[237.80][237.80](audio cut off)[238.30][238.30](audio cut off)[238.80][238.80](audio cut off)[239.30][239.30](audio cut off)[239.80][239.80](audio cut off)[240.30][240.30](audio cut off)[240.80][240.80](audio cut off)[241.30][241.30](audio cut off)[241.80][241.80](audio cut off)[242.30][242.30](audio cut off)[242.80][242.80](audio cut off)[243.30][243.30](audio cut off)[243.80][243.80](audio cut off)[244.30][244.30](audio cut off)[244.80][244.80](audio cut off)[245.30][245.30](audio cut off)[245.80][245.80](audio cut off)[246.30][246.30](audio cut off)[246.80][246.80](audio cut off)[247.30][247.30](audio cut off)[247.80][247.80](audio cut off)[248.30][248.30](audio cut off)[248.80][248.80](audio cut off)[249.30][249.30](audio cut off)[249.80][249.80](audio cut off)[250.30][250.30](audio cut off)[250.80][250.80](audio cut off)[251.30][251.30](audio cut off)[251.80][251.80](audio cut off)[252.30][252.30](audio cut off)[252.80][252.80](audio cut off)[253.30][253.30](audio cut off)[253.80][253.80](audio cut off)[254.30][254.30](audio cut off)[254.80][254.80](audio cut off)[255.30][255.30](audio cut off)[255.80][255.80](audio cut off)[256.30][256.30](audio cut off)[256.80][256.80](audio cut off)[257.30][257.30](audio cut off)[257.80][257.80](audio cut off)[258.30][258.30](audio cut off)[258.80][258.80](audio cut off)[259.30][259.30](audio cut off)[259.80][259.80](audio cut off)[260.30][260.30](audio cut off)[260.80][260.80](audio cut off)[261.30][261.30](audio cut off)[261.80][261.80](audio cut off)[262.30][262.30](audio cut off) Thank you very much Sally. I have a quick announcement to make. This is the last time we will see Sally. She has been promoted to vicar in charge of Woodall Spa. So it is with regret we say bye-bye to you. Can I ask for a round of applause Sally Blum?
Thank you very much.
Will you all please be seated? The first business of the annual meeting is to elect the mayor for the ensuing year. May I have a proposition please? councillor Dorian?
Thank you Mr Mayor. It is my great pleasure to move that councillor Helen Staples of Fishtoft be elected the mayor of this borough to hold office until the next annual meeting of the council. Mr Mayor, councillor Helen Staples was born and bred in Boston and was first elected to represent Fishtof Ward in 2007 and then re-elected in 2011 before having a break for a few years. I was delighted when she agreed to join the Boston Independent Group last year and was elected once again. During her previous service to the council, Mr Mayor, Helen served as deputy mayor twice. Once for councillor Maureen Dennis in 2009 and once for councillor Alison Austin in 2014. Then Helen also served as deputy mayoress for councillor Dennis again in 2015. This is testament to Helen's popularity and reliability that she was chosen so many times to be part of the civic party. Helen is married to Richard, who's a retired farmer. But because he doesn't keep so well, Helen has chosen her childhood friend Jennifer Oglesby as her mayoress. In her younger days, Helen worked for Marks and Spencer's before training them to become a nurse for older people. One of her greatest achievements was to be the founder member of the Lincolnshire Farmers Support Group, which is now part of the Rural Stress Network. This is important work, Mr Mayor, and it saw Helen sit for hours on end with agricultural workers who sometimes were suicidal and but for the compassion shown by Helen could easily have gone through with that dreadful outcome. Helen is a very active member of the Fishtof 400 Club, which I had the pleasure of visiting when I was the mayor. This is like a youth club for pensioners really. And by gosh, they know how to enjoy themselves and have a laugh. Helen has proved to be a very conscientious ward councillor and has been a good mentor to her new colleagues councillor Sharp and councillor Scoot. The residents of Fishtof know Helen well and they also know that they will be well-served in their moment of need. In her spare time, Helen enjoys gardening, crochet, knitting and needlework and she's brilliant at arranging flowers. Helen is fully committed to the residents of Boston and Mr Mayor, I know that she will be a fantastic ambassador for our borough. It's my great pleasure to nominate her to be Boston's 489th mayor. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Dorian. Do we have a seconder please? Councillor Gleeson, thank you.
Hello councillors, ladies and gentlemen. It is with great pleasure that I rise to second the nomination of my friend councillor Helen Staples to be mayor of Boston for the coming civic year. I knew Helen before I was elected and so when I did come into the chamber it was nice to see a friendly face. What became very evident while working with Helen is her absolute commitment to Boston. The town runs through her veins, she loves it. She goes that extra mile for her ward members and for anybody else in the borough. I am convinced she will make a fantastic ambassador for this council, to the people of Boston. And even more, she will make a fantastic ambassador for the borough, for the wider county. Helen will serve Boston 150% and I'm very proud to second her. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Gleeson. Does anyone else wish to speak? Are there any further propositions? Thank you. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Are there any abstentions? Okay, thank you. That concludes the vote. I shall now retire.
I am honoured and proud to become the 489th mayor of Boston and to become part of the history of this town. The first mayor I believe was Nicholas Robinson, who following the charter granted by Henry VIII in 1545. I am conscious that I follow a long line of very dedicated mayors, some of whom are here this evening. I would like to thank our retiring mayor councillor David Brown for his kindly chats and advice to me. David, I've truly appreciated them. Yes, I am a proud Bostonian, born and bred here, lived and worked here all my life. We have a rich heritage, a beautiful marketplace with unique architecture and the most marvellous parish church of St Bartolfs and we are surrounded by some of the richest farmland in Europe. Looking to my year ahead as mayor, I am deeply honoured that my childhood friend Jennifer Oglesby has agreed to be mayoress. Like me, her heart lies within our community and our families and friends. Jen really does have a heart of gold. Our focus will be on communities, groups and all the special people who volunteer because they are the heart of this town and they make it so special. Our chosen charities are Boston Gateway because they do so much for people with learning difficulties and two of my very special friends really love going to Gateway Club on a Tuesday evening. We have also chosen Local Hope, perhaps unknown to many, so we want to help raise their profile. They are a very special group of people who work tirelessly to help others. Recently, they purchased two specialised wheelchairs for Pilgrim Hospital, I think the cost of £2,000 each. And they took a coach of pensioners on a day trip into the walls with a lovely meal afterwards and I was one of the lucky recipients. Didn't sit very comfortably though being called a pensioner. We have chosen also to support Boston Framework and Boston Floating Support Team. They work so tirelessly for the homeless and I think every one of us here tonight must be so grateful to reach tired each night to a clean, warm bed and comfortable bed. So my heart goes out to those people that don't. My thanks will also go to David Stevenson, who has kindly agreed to be mayor's chaplain for the year. Father David, if you haven't met him, is the new vicar of Boston. He's a lovely person and I wish him well in his ministry and I look forward to working alongside him. I must also thank councillor Andorian and councillor Paul Gleeson for their wonderful proposals and seconders. I'm not a person who cries easily but you almost made me cry. You really did for your kind words which touched me deeply. So thank you both very much. No mayor could get by without the amazing support of Democratic Services and our mace bearer. They are amazing. So I look forward very much to my year ahead and we'll endeavour to do my very best for all of you and for the wonderful borough of Boston. Thank you. Now, we have the pleasure of electing the deputy mayor of Boston, councillor Suzanne Welbury. Now paperwork and typing and IT are not my skills, I have to say. Councillor Welbury is a local lady. She was born at Wiberton West Hospital and educated in Curtin. She recently celebrated her 60th birthday but doesn't look it. Her mum tells me that she went to Curtin Primary School and some of the children there were holding on to the mums and crying and didn't want to go to school. Suzanne couldn't wait to be called through. She said, "I just want to get into the classroom." So she was eager to do things even at a very young age. She went on to Loughborough to study tourism and travel and then worked in London at Westminster City Council and one of her accolades is organising the Lord Mayor's Parade which was on the Thames. So Suzanne has a lot of abilities. She's a mother of three lovely children and became a very proud grandmother at the beginning of February to baby Violet, who possibly is the first baby to ever attend a council meeting. She's here with us. What impresses me most about Suzanne is her work ethic and the fact that she is like me, very community-minded. I might add too that she's perhaps following in the footsteps of her great uncle, the late councillor Bill North, who was also mayor of Boston and worked tirelessly again for his community. So I know that whatever Suzanne does as deputy mayor, she has a daughter alongside her Jade and they will both be wonderful ambassadors for Boston. So Suzanne, would you like to step forward? Oh sorry, we need a son. See, first blunder. There you go. I would now like to ask councillor Barry Peerpoint to second.
Madam Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure and honour to second councillor Susan Welbury. Susan, I didn't think you were 60. I thought you were more like 40. So there you are. I've known you for a year. You're a new councillor to the council. And I've got to say that Suzanne works very tirelessly in her ward. She's very big on fundraising and community activities. She serves her ward very well. She never stops. She's always working very hard for council, residents and so forth. I'm extremely proud and pleased to second you. I know you will make an excellent deputy mayor and I wish you all the very best and thank you very much for taking that role on and supporting our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Peerpoint. Are you all agreed?
Yes.
Suzanne, if you'd like to come forward please.[1112.14][1112.14](audio cut off)[1112.64][1112.64](audio cut off)[1113.14][1113.14](audio cut off)[1113.64][1113.64](audio cut off)[1114.14][1114.14](audio cut off)[1114.64][1114.64](audio cut off)[1115.14][1115.14](audio cut off)[1115.64][1115.64](audio cut off)[1116.14][1116.14](audio cut off)[1116.64][1116.64](audio cut off)[1117.14][1117.14](audio cut off)[1117.64][1117.64](audio cut off)[1118.14][1118.14](audio cut off)[1118.64][1118.64](audio cut off)[1119.14][1119.14](audio cut off)[1119.64][1119.64](audio cut off)[1120.14][1120.14](audio cut off)[1120.64][1120.64](audio cut off)[1121.14][1121.14](audio cut off)[1121.64][1121.64](audio cut off)[1122.14][1122.14](audio cut off)[1122.64][1122.64](audio cut off)[1123.14][1123.14](audio cut off)[1123.64][1123.64](audio cut off)[1124.14][1124.14](audio cut off)[1124.64][1124.64](audio cut off)[1125.14][1125.14](audio cut off)[1125.64][1125.64](audio cut off)[1126.14][1126.14](audio cut off)[1126.64][1126.64](audio cut off)[1127.14][1127.14](audio cut off)[1127.64][1127.64](audio cut off)[1128.14][1128.14](audio cut off)[1128.64][1128.64](audio cut off)[1129.14][1129.14](audio cut off)[1129.64][1129.64](audio cut off)[1130.14][1130.14](audio cut off)[1130.64][1130.64](audio cut off)[1131.14][1131.14](audio cut off)[1131.64][1131.64](audio cut off)[1132.14][1132.14](audio cut off)[1132.64][1132.64](audio cut off)[1133.14][1133.14](audio cut off)[1133.64][1133.64](audio cut off)[1134.14][1134.14](audio cut off)[1134.64][1134.64](audio cut off)[1135.14][1135.14](audio cut off)[1135.64][1135.64](audio cut off)[1136.14][1136.14](audio cut off)[1136.64][1136.64](audio cut off)[1137.14][1137.14](audio cut off)[1137.64][1137.64](audio cut off)[1138.14][1138.14](audio cut off)[1138.64][1138.64](audio cut off)[1139.14][1139.14](audio cut off)[1139.64][1139.64](audio cut off)[1140.14][1140.14](audio cut off)[1140.64][1140.64](audio cut off)[1141.14][1141.14](audio cut off)[1141.64][1141.64](audio cut off)[1142.14][1142.14](audio cut off)[1142.64][1142.64](audio cut off)[1143.14][1143.14](audio cut off)[1143.64][1143.64](audio cut off)[1144.14][1144.14](audio cut off)[1144.64][1144.64](audio cut off)[1145.14][1145.14](audio cut off)[1145.64][1145.64](audio cut off)[1146.14][1146.14](audio cut off)[1146.64][1146.64](audio cut off)[1147.14][1147.14](audio cut off)[1147.64][1147.64](audio cut off)[1148.14][1148.14](audio cut off)[1148.64][1148.64](audio cut off)[1149.14][1149.14](audio cut off)[1149.64][1149.64](audio cut off)[1150.14][1150.14](audio cut off)[1150.64][1150.64](audio cut off)[1151.14][1151.14](audio cut off)[1151.64][1151.64](audio cut off)[1152.14][1152.14](audio cut off)[1152.64][1152.64](audio cut off)[1153.14][1153.14](audio cut off)[1153.64][1153.64](audio cut off)[1154.14][1154.14](audio cut off)[1154.64][1154.64](audio cut off)[1155.14][1155.14](audio cut off)[1155.64][1155.64](audio cut off)[1156.14][1156.14](audio cut off)[1156.64][1156.64](audio cut off)[1157.14][1157.14](audio cut off)[1157.64][1157.64](audio cut off)[1158.14][1158.14](audio cut off)[1158.64][1158.64](audio cut off)[1159.14][1159.14](audio cut off)[1159.64][1159.64](audio cut off)[1160.14][1160.14](audio cut off)[1160.64][1160.64](audio cut off)[1161.14][1161.14](audio cut off)[1161.64][1161.64](audio cut off)[1162.14][1162.14](audio cut off)[1162.64][1162.64](audio cut off)[1163.14][1163.14](audio cut off)[1163.64][1163.64](audio cut off)[1164.14][1164.14](audio cut off)[1164.64][1164.64](audio cut off)[1165.14][1165.14](audio cut off)[1165.64][1165.64](audio cut off)[1166.14][1166.14](audio cut off)[1166.64][1166.64](audio cut off)[1167.14][1167.14](audio cut off)[1167.64][1167.64](audio cut off)[1168.14][1168.14](audio cut off)[1168.64][1168.64](audio cut off)[1169.14][1169.14](audio cut off)[1169.64][1169.64](audio cut off)[1170.14][1170.14](audio cut off)[1170.64][1170.64](audio cut off)[1171.14][1171.14](audio cut off)[1171.64][1171.64](audio cut off)[1172.14][1172.14](audio cut off)[1172.64][1172.64](audio cut off)[1173.14][1173.14](audio cut off)[1173.64][1173.64](audio cut off)[1174.14][1174.14](audio cut off)[1174.64][1174.64](audio cut off)[1175.14][1175.14](audio cut off)[1175.64][1175.64](audio cut off)[1176.14][1176.14](audio cut off)[1176.64][1176.64](audio cut off)[1177.14][1177.14](audio cut off)[1177.64][1177.64](audio cut off)[1178.14][1178.14](audio cut off)[1178.64][1178.64](audio cut off)[1179.14][1179.14](audio cut off)[1179.64][1179.64](audio cut off)[1180.14][1180.14](audio cut off)[1180.64][1180.64](audio cut off)[1181.14][1181.14](audio cut off)[1181.64][1181.64](audio cut off)[1182.14][1182.14](audio cut off)[1182.64][1182.64](audio cut off)[1183.14][1183.14](audio cut off)[1183.64][1183.64](audio cut off)[1184.14][1184.14](audio cut off)[1184.64][1184.64](audio cut off)[1185.14][1185.14](audio cut off)[1185.64][1185.64](audio cut off)[1186.14][1186.14](audio cut off)[1186.64][1186.64](audio cut off)[1187.14][1187.14](audio cut off)[1187.64][1187.64](audio cut off)[1188.14][1188.14](audio cut off)[1188.64][1188.64](audio cut off)[1189.14][1189.14](audio cut off)[1189.64][1189.64](audio cut off)[1190.14][1190.14](audio cut off)[1190.64][1190.64](audio cut off)[1191.14][1191.14](audio cut off)[1191.64][1191.64](audio cut off)[1192.14][1192.14](audio cut off)[1192.64][1192.64](audio cut off)[1193.14][1193.14](audio cut off)[1193.64][1193.64](audio cut off)[1194.14][1194.14](audio cut off)[1194.64][1194.64](audio cut off)[1195.14][1195.14](audio cut off)[1195.64][1195.64](audio cut off)[1196.14][1196.14](audio cut off)[1196.64][1196.64](audio cut off)[1197.14][1197.14](audio cut off)[1197.64][1197.64](audio cut off)[1198.14][1198.14](audio cut off)[1198.64][1198.64](audio cut off)[1199.14][1199.14](audio cut off)[1199.64][1199.64](audio cut off)[1200.14][1200.14](audio cut off)[1200.64][1200.64](audio cut off)[1201.14][1201.14](audio cut off)[1201.64][1201.64](audio cut off)[1202.14][1202.14](audio cut off)[1202.64][1202.64](audio cut off)[1203.14][1203.14](audio cut off)[1203.64][1203.64](audio cut off)[1204.14][1204.14](audio cut off)[1204.64][1204.64](audio cut off)[1205.14][1205.14](audio cut off)[1205.64][1205.64](audio cut off)[1206.14][1206.14](audio cut off)[1206.64][1206.64](audio cut off)[1207.14][1207.14](audio cut off)[1207.64][1207.64](audio cut off)[1208.14][1208.14](audio cut off)[1208.64][1208.64](audio cut off)[1209.14][1209.14](audio cut off)[1209.64][1209.64](audio cut off)[1210.14][1210.14](audio cut off)[1210.64][1210.64](audio cut off)[1211.14][1211.14](audio cut off)[1211.64][1211.64](audio cut off)[1212.14][1212.14](audio cut off)[1212.64][1212.64](audio cut off)[1213.14][1213.14](audio cut off)[1213.64][1213.64](audio cut off)[1214.14][1214.14](audio cut off)[1214.64][1214.64](audio cut off)[1215.14][1215.14](audio cut off)[1215.64][1215.64](audio cut off)[1216.14][1216.14](audio cut off)[1216.64][1216.64](audio cut off)[1217.14][1217.14](audio cut off)[1217.64][1217.64](audio cut off)[1218.14][1218.14](audio cut off)[1218.64][1218.64](audio cut off)[1219.14][1219.14](audio cut off)[1219.64][1219.64](audio cut off)[1220.14][1220.14](audio cut off)[1220.64][1220.64](audio cut off)[1221.14][1221.14](audio cut off)[1221.64][1221.64](audio cut off)[1222.14][1222.14](audio cut off)[1222.64][1222.64](audio cut off)[1223.14][1223.14](audio cut off)[1223.64][1223.64](audio cut off)[1224.14][1224.14](audio cut off)[1224.64][1224.64](audio cut off)[1225.14][1225.14](audio cut off)[1225.64][1225.64](audio cut off)[1226.14][1226.14](audio cut off)[1226.64][1226.64](audio cut off)[1227.14][1227.14](audio cut off)[1227.64][1227.64](audio cut off)[1228.14][1228.14](audio cut off)[1228.64][1228.64](audio cut off)[1229.14][1229.14](audio cut off)[1229.64][1229.64](audio cut off)[1230.14][1230.14](audio cut off)[1230.64][1230.64](audio cut off)[1231.14][1231.14](audio cut off)[1231.64][1231.64](audio cut off)[1232.14][1232.14](audio cut off)[1232.64][1232.64](audio cut off)[1233.14][1233.14](audio cut off)[1233.64][1233.64](audio cut off)[1234.14][1234.14](audio cut off)[1234.64][1234.64](audio cut off)[1235.14][1235.14](audio cut off)[1235.64][1235.64](audio cut off)[1236.14][1236.14](audio cut off)[1236.64][1236.64](audio cut off)[1237.14][1237.14](audio cut off)[1237.64][1237.64](audio cut off)[1238.14][1238.14](audio cut off)[1238.64][1238.64](audio cut off)[1239.14][1239.14](audio cut off)[1239.64][1239.64](audio cut off)[1240.14][1240.14](audio cut off) I would like to ask you all to take your seats. I would like to ask you all to take your seats. Having been elected to the office as mayor, I will now read and sign the statutory declaration of acceptance of office. Thank you. I, Helen Staples, having been elected to the office of mayor, hereby declare that I take office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I will now ask Jennifer Oglesby to come forward to receive the mayoress's chain of office. I am honoured and proud to become the 489th mayor of Boston and to become part of the history of this town. The first mayor I believe was Nicholas Robinson, who following the charter granted by Henry VIII in 1545. I am conscious that I follow a long line of very dedicated mayors, some of whom are here this evening. I would like to thank our retiring mayor councillor David Brown for his kindly chats and advice to me. David, I've truly appreciated them. Yes, I am a proud Bostonian, born and bred here, lived and worked here all my life. We have a rich heritage, a beautiful marketplace with unique architecture and the most marvellous parish church of St Bartolfs and we are surrounded by some of the richest farmland in Europe. Looking to my year ahead as mayor, I am deeply honoured that my childhood friend Jennifer Oglesby has agreed to be mayoress. Like me, her heart lies within our community and our families and friends. Jen really does have a heart of gold. Our focus will be on communities, groups and all the special people who volunteer because they are the heart of this town and they make it so special. Our chosen charities are Boston Gateway because they do so much for people with learning difficulties and two of my very special friends really love going to Gateway Club on a Tuesday evening. We have also chosen Local Hope, perhaps unknown to many, so we want to help raise their profile. They are a very special group of people who work tirelessly to help others. Recently, they purchased two specialised wheelchairs for Pilgrim Hospital, I think the cost of £2,000 each. And they took a coach of pensioners on a day trip into the walls with a lovely meal afterwards and I was one of the lucky recipients. Didn't sit very comfortably though being called a pensioner. We have chosen also to support Boston Framework and Boston Floating Support Team. They work so tirelessly for the homeless and I think every one of us here tonight must be so grateful to reach tired each night to a clean, warm bed and comfortable bed. So my heart goes out to those people that don't. My thanks will also go to David Stevenson, who has kindly agreed to be mayor's chaplain for the year. Father David, if you haven't met him, is the new vicar of Boston. He's a lovely person and I wish him well in his ministry and I look forward to working alongside him. I must also thank councillor Andorian and councillor Paul Gleeson for their wonderful proposals and seconders. I'm not a person who cries easily but you almost made me cry. You really did for your kind words which touched me deeply. So thank you both very much. No mayor could get by without the amazing support of Democratic Services and our mace bearer. They are amazing. So I look forward very much to my year ahead and we'll endeavour to do my very best for all of you and for the wonderful borough of Boston. Thank you. Now, we have the pleasure of electing the deputy mayor of Boston, councillor Suzanne Welbury. Now paperwork and typing and IT are not my skills, I have to say. Councillor Welbury is a local lady. She was born at Wiberton West Hospital and educated in Curtin. She recently celebrated her 60th birthday but doesn't look it. Her mum tells me that she went to Curtin Primary School and some of the children there were holding on to the mums and crying and didn't want to go to school. Suzanne couldn't wait to be called through. She said, "I just want to get into the classroom." So she was eager to do things even at a very young age. She went on to Loughborough to study tourism and travel and then worked in London at Westminster City Council and one of her accolades is organising the Lord Mayor's Parade which was on the Thames. So Suzanne has a lot of abilities. She's a mother of three lovely children and became a very proud grandmother at the beginning of February to baby Violet, who possibly is the first baby to ever attend a council meeting. She's here with us. What impresses me most about Suzanne is her work ethic and the fact that she is like me, very community-minded. I might add too that she's perhaps following in the footsteps of her great uncle, the late councillor Bill North, who was also mayor of Boston and worked tirelessly again for his community. So I know that whatever Suzanne does as deputy mayor, she has a daughter alongside her, Jade, and they will both be wonderful ambassadors for Boston. So Suzanne, would you like to step forward? Oh sorry, we need a son. See, first blunder. There you go. I would now like to ask councillor Barry Peerpoint to second.
Madam Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure and honour to second councillor Susan Welbury. Susan, I didn't think you were 60. I thought you were more like 40. So there you are. I've known you for a year. You're a new councillor to the council. And I've got to say that Suzanne works very tirelessly in her ward. She's very big on fundraising and community activities. She serves her ward very well. She never stops. She's always working very hard for council, residents and so forth. I'm extremely proud and pleased to second you. I know you will make an excellent Deputy Mayor and I wish you all the very best. And thank you very much for taking that role on and supporting our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pierpoint. Are you all agreed?
Yes.
Suzanne, if you'd like to come forward, please. I've worn it twice. I will now ask Ms Jade Welbury to come forward to receive the Deputy Mayoress's chain of office. Now we move on, please, to agenda item C. Are there any apologies?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three apologies this evening from councillors Bedford, Drayton and Civician. Thank you.
I will now ask councillor Rylett to propose a vote of thanks to the retiring mayor councillor David Brown. Thank you councillor Rylett.
Madam Mayor, members and guests, it gives me great pleasure to propose a vote of thanks to our outgoing mayor. I recall Mr Mayor, in your first few days of office, telling me, "Well, they are sending me on a training course to Rushcliffe. The title is 'How to be a Mayor.' My reply was, 'Oh right, DB. I'm sure you will enjoy your day.' Mr Mayor, over the last year you have been a fantastic ambassador, representing our town whilst visiting the length and breadth of our county, meeting many new faces on the way and building new friendships, which I know you have thoroughly enjoyed. And I do know you were thrilled when you had the opportunity to meet royalty. Your joviality at full council meetings has shone through. Even though perhaps not always feeling 100%, you have given the role 100%. Your charities for the year, the RNLI and Boston Salvation Army, will, I am sure, be delighted with the sum of in excess of over £2,500,000 that you have raised and will benefit both charities. Mr Mayor, I remember you telling me that you'd have visited Future Fest at the Princess Royal Sports Arena, this being a careers event for students. You enjoyed it so much that you stayed all day. You gave your usual chuckle, reminiscing the day. You recalled a lorry unit was parked in the car park and the students decided to see how many they could actually fit into this unit. You then watched 20 students disembark from the passenger door. I think this reminded you perhaps of the antics that you used to get up to as a youth in your village. How many students could we get in the telephone box? Thank you again, Mr Mayor, for your dedication and commitment during the past year."
Thank you, councillor. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Rylett. May I have a second please? Councillor Pierpoint.
Mr Mayor, Mr outgoing Mayor, councillor David Brown, what can I say about you, my friend? Known you for quite a few years. We've had some really good laughs and jokes. We've had some really good fun. You've enjoyed your year, I can tell. We've discussed all the things that you've done, all the people you've visited. You've made a very good impression on the town and the borough. I like your community spirit. I've enjoyed working with you on your fundraising and one of your fundraising events for you. I know that you've made some good friends and we shall miss you. And thank you very much for your time in office. It'd be really appreciated. And I know that you will go on to better things as a councillor. Thank you very much for being our mayor for the year. Thank you. Thank you.
Are you all agreed? Now I'm going to present the retiring mayor with his plaque. I'm glad you've been with us. You've been an outstanding mayor and I've always admired your sense of humour. I'm hoping you'll have a nice, gentle year. You'll get the jobs done that you wanted to.
Yes, you did. I will. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. It's a great honour to receive that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Leader. One year ago, I had the pleasure of becoming Mayor of Boston Borough. It has been an honour to represent the town and the borough. The past year has been absolutely fulfilling. During that time, I have met many people ranging from very young to very old, engaging with schools and academies, to celebrating 100 years birthday parties, opening supermarkets, to celebrate historic events such as the Grammar School Beast Day, Beast Mart opening and of course, the annual Mayfair. Many organisations staffed by volunteers greet the mayoralty with respect as this is a form of endorsement and recognition. It is a fitting tribute to acknowledge the hard work that they do. We should all recognise Boston has an abundance of worthwhile voluntary groups, their service to the communities being of substantial service. I have travelled through Lincolnshire and met many wonderful people from all generations. A royal visit to the stump from Her Royal Highness Princess Anne endorsed the town's history and valued heritage. I've enjoyed wearing the red robes of Boston. 99 engagement have been fulfilled. The mayor's charity fund has raised £2,500,000 for my two charities, the Salvation Army and the RNLI. And now to my thank yous. Thank you for my Deputy Mayor councillor Richard Austin, BM, and his wife Alison. Thank you to councillors Barry Pierpoint, Michael Gilbert and John Baxter for helping me on charity events. Thank you to Andrew Lamming, the mayor's mace bearer, although I call him Google Andy because what he doesn't know isn't worth knowing anyway. And thank you to Alison Hall for looking after me and keeping me on the straight and narrow. Thank you to Mayor Scout, Lucas, and the mayor's guide, Freya, and all those who have helped me and the guidance they have offered. I congratulate the new mayor, councillor Helen Staples, on her appointment and I wish her well. And I hope she enjoys her year as much as I have. Thank you.
I would now like to ask the Mayoress to come forward to receive her plaque. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Yes. Yes, I would like to...
I would now like to ask the retiring mayor councillor David Brown to move a vote of thanks to the retiring Deputy Mayor councillor Richard Austin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to propose a vote of thanks to councillor Richard Austin, BM, for his support throughout the year as Deputy Mayor and for the good guidance and advice he has offered me. I'm not going to leave out your beloved wife, Alison. So again, thank you both very, very much indeed.
May I have a second please? Councillor Andy Isard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is probably going to be one of the shortest ones, so I ain't going to keep you too long. I would just like to say that I would like to second this vote of thanks to the Deputy Mayor councillor Richard Austin, who I've got to know quite well over the first year of my office and we worked together on such things as the Boston Woods Trust. I would like to thank him for his support to the mayor and I'm sure over the past 12 months, he's been able to offer a lot of advice to the past mayor. I'm sure now he's going to go back to concentrating not only as a ward councillor, but his great work with the Boston Handset Group and of course, with the Boston Woods Trust, to name but two. I would like to second, please. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Isard. Now, the Mayor Scout and Mayoress, please. I'm now going to present the Deputy Mayor with his plaque. Thank you councillor Austin for your sterling service once again. What would this borough do without you? I would just, if I could bottle Richard Austin's energy and sell it, I would be a very rich woman today. He's got the most amazing energy levels. I'm not going to tell you how old he is, but he's a little bit older than Suzanne Welbury. Richard, have you got a few words to say?
Just to say that it's been a great honour to help David in his year of office, but in truth, he gave me very little to do. He was so busy himself, but I said I only had about three formal engagements through the whole of the year, which indicates how active David's been in the last 12 months.
The Mayor Scout and Mayor's Guide, please.
Lucas, it's my pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for the work you do.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Will Miss Freya Alstead, the retiring Mayoress's guide, please come forward? Will Olivia Bullby Croft, the new Mayoress's guide, please come forward?
Thank you, Freya. Well done. Well deserved. All right. Thank you very much for your time. Lovely.
Thank you. Now we move on to part two of the meeting, which is the preliminaries. May I have the council's permission to sign the minutes of the meeting of the full council held on the 4th of March and extraordinary full council held on the 25th of March?
Agreed.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The chief executive will inquire whether any members wish to declare any interest in respect of items on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Could members make me aware, please, if there are any interests in respect of any items on tonight's agenda? There are none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We now move to agenda item three, democratic arrangements for 2024/25, which is membership of committees for 2024/25, chairman and vice-chairman of committees, programme of meetings, cabinet appointments and portfolios, council representation on outside bodies, and appointment of independent person and independent panel. We will now move on to agenda items for the evening. I will ask the monitoring officer to introduce the report for the democratic arrangements. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening councillors. The paper before you this evening, agenda item one, sets out the democratic arrangements for this council for the 2024/25 municipal year. Appendix A to the report sets out the proposed membership for the council's committees, subcommittees, panels and working groups for the forthcoming year. The appointments within the table document reflect the wishes of the three political groups and include the following updates to the original version. On the corporate and community overview and scrutiny committee, councillor Pierpoint will replace councillor Marson. And on the planning committee, councillors Richard Austin and councillor Gleeson are confirmed as the independent 2020 group substitute members. Moving on to appendix B to the report, this proposes the appointment of chairman and vice-chairman of committees that are appointed at this evening's annual meeting. Members should note that the chairman and vice-chairman of the remaining committees and panels will be appointed at their respective first meetings. Moving on to appendix C within the report, this sets out the proposed schedule of meetings for the council and its committees for the next year. The report also requests the usual delegation for the chief executive in consultation with the relevant chairman to amend meeting dates or cancel meetings should the need arise. Appendix D confirms the leader of the council's appointments to the deputy leader position, the cabinet and their respective portfolios. This information is presented to council for noting in accordance with the council's constitution. Appendix A, sorry, appendix E, a copy of which has been tabled this evening, proposes appointments to outside bodies as put forward by the group leaders. There is one update to the document tabled with councillor Pierpoint replacing councillor Mountain on the Black Sluice Internal Drainage Board. Members should note that the number of nominations received for each outside body matches the number of seats to be appointed to. Accordingly, members will be pleased that the council can this evening move the appointments on block. The final recommendation within the report is to reappoint Alison Fairman as the council's independent person and to make appointments to the council's independent panel as set out in section 7.4 of the report. Ms Fairman has significant, relevant professional experience and knowledge to undertake the role and is willing to continue to act as the council's independent person whilst the council recruits a new independent person in 2024/25. Further details on the role of the independent person and the role they undertake for the authority are set out in section seven of the report. And finally, I just wanted to place on record and on behalf of my team, my thanks to the group leaders, councillor... on behalf of my team, my thanks to the group leaders, councillor Doran, councillor Woodliffe and councillor Rylett for their support in advising of appointments to the various council bodies and outside bodies which are presented this evening. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, madam mayor. I move the six recommendations in the report, which includes the membership of committees, appendix A, and appointments to outside bodies in appendix E as tabled. Thank you, councillor Doran. Is there a second, and would you like to reserve the right to speak, councillor Albarton?
I'd like to second, madam mayor, from a seated position because of an injury to my knee. I don't want to reserve the right to speak. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item? No, you're all silent. Councillor Doran, would you like to... Are there proser of the recommendations? Would you like to sum up at all? Thank you. Thank you all. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour, against or any abstentions? In favour please? I think it's clearly carried. Thank you. Now we move on to the appointments to the independent remuneration panel. The second item of tonight's agenda is appointments to the independent remuneration panel. I will ask the monitoring officer to introduce this report. Thank you, John.
Thank you, madam mayor. The council is required to maintain an independent remuneration panel to consider and make recommendations about the level of allowances payable to members of the council. The independent remuneration panel last reviewed the members' allowances scheme in 2022. Since that time, one of the panel members has resigned and one of the panel member appointments has expired. The council therefore needs to make new appointments to the panel to enable a review of allowances to take place. Temporary appointments are recommended for one year until May 2025 from existing independent remuneration panel members across the South and East Lincolnshire councils partnership. Chris Penny and Nicky Marzek have served on South Holland's independent remuneration panel for a number of years, and therefore are considered to be suitably qualified to serve on Boston's panel for the forthcoming year. The report also sets out that a small annual allowance of £200 for panel members be approved to reflect the role and work they undertake on behalf of the council. Finally, subject to council approving the appointments, it is proposed to convene a meeting of the panel in the near future with a view to conducting a review of allowances and making recommendations to full council later this financial year. Thank you, madam mayor.
Do we have a proposer for this, councillor Doran?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd just like to move the recommendations in the report. Thank you.
I'm happy to second, madam mayor. I don't want to reserve the right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Albarton. Are there any... Just one, councillor Woodliffe, please.
Thank you, madam mayor. I fully support the proposals as before us, and hope that this committee meets as soon as possible with the recommendations brought to this council, again, as soon as possible. I'm particularly concerned about the parity that exists between the three councils, and the fact that we are a part of a partnership with South Holland and East Lindsay, and that our allowances here are distinctly lower than any of the other two. And I look forward to a quick resolution of that matter, as many of us over here and on the other side, I'm sure, would like to see. So I fully support the proposal and hope that proposals for an improvement in our system comes for us as soon as possible, July possibly being the meeting. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you so much councillor Woodliffe. Would you like to sum up councillor Doran on this matter? No, thank you. Can we all now move to the vote, please? All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you councillors. We now move to item number three, workforce terms and conditions alignment across the South East Lincolnshire councils partnership. The final item of tonight's agenda is the workforce teams and conditions alignment across the South East Lincolnshire councils partnership. We'll ask the assistant director, corporate director, to introduce this report, please.
Councillor Doran, thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. As you say, it's the final item on the agenda this evening. I'm pleased to present to council a report that brings forward the process to commence the alignment of terms and conditions of employment across the partnership. For the guests here tonight, that's the partnership between East Lindsay District Council, Boston Borough Council and South Holland District Council. As more teams come together to create shared services across the three councils, it's important that we seek to align their terms and conditions as far as possible. What you don't want is to have two people working in the same office on different pay scales. The partnership's 24-25 alignment and delivery plan approved by the council with the budget identified this work as something to commence partnership-wide this financial year. Unions and the workforce have been briefed that this report is coming forward to this meeting and on the approach that we've proposed. Each partnership council is considering a similar report at their May meetings. In aligning the terms and conditions, it's the intention to seek to move to the best of what each council has to offer as far as humanly possible. At present, there are variations to terms and conditions of employment across the partnership council. Some are minor, but some are more significant. And the report seeks to authorise the chief executive, that's the chap sitting next to madam mayor, through a phased approach due to complexity, and to implement revised terms and conditions following appropriate consultation with the workforce and the trade unions. Section 2.4 sets out those terms and conditions to be aligned in phase one, with 2.9 in the report setting out those for future phases. So we're going to start small and build up. I would ask council to support this work, given its importance to the partnership's workforce. And for that reason, madam mayor, I'd like to move formally the recommendations on page 45 and 46. I wouldn't read them out and hold you up. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Doran. Is there a second, councillor Albarton, and would you like to reserve the right to speak?
Yeah, happy to second again, madam mayor, but no, don't need my right to speak. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item? Councillor Woodliffe?
Thank you, madam mayor. I fully support these proposals. Alignment is a real issue for me, and right across the board, I think our workforce deserves the very best. And I agree with what the leader said, to raise it to the very best of the three councils. So I'm fully support to this particular proposal, and of course, you're referring to the previous agenda item for ourselves as well. So yes, it has my full support. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you so much councillor Woodliffe. Are there any other speakers on this item? No. Councillor Doran, would you like to sum up? No, thank you. Well, honoured guest, ladies, gentlemen and fellow councillors, this concludes the business of the meeting. Oh, I beg your pardon, I've forgotten one thing. I knew I'd make a mess. We need to vote on the matter that councillor Doran spoke on. All those in favour? Against? Anyone? Abstentions? No, clearly carried. Thank you. Yep, so that there concludes the business of the meeting, and I would ask you all to remain seated for a few minutes before coming through to the mayor's parlour. Thank you very much for your forbearance tonight. Thank you.